I want to call to order the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for June 10th, 2024. This time, we're going to ask Rutherford County Chairman and Commission Member Jeff Phillips for our prayer and pledge. Everyone, please stand.
Out with me, please. Our Father in Heaven, Lord, we're thankful for this day. We're thankful for life, and we're thankful for your promise of an abundant life. God, we ask that you be with us as we think about those in our community that are suffering. We ask that you be with them and their families, and that the needs of those families are met. We ask that you be with this commission as we go about the business of Rutherford County. Give us the good sense to make the decisions that are in the long-term best interest of all Rutherford County citizens. We ask all of these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now have our roll call and determination of quorum. Madam Secretary.
Jim Aberwater.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Mike Kush.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Marvin Whitworth. Jim Thompson. Hettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We do have a determination of quorum. We'll ask at this time that our Vice Chairman do our approval of our minutes for May 13th and May 28th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed the minutes of both of those meetings and found those to be in good order. Therefore, I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Have a second, Commissioner Aberwater. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, they have been approved. Moving now, public comment period. Mr. Damasi?
No, sir. No signups for that.
No one had public comment period, so we will now move into our items withdrawn or deferred.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Planning Commissioners will recall that the original agenda had three items on it. One of the items has been pulled off the agenda. The agenda has been revised to reflect that. That was the application REZ 24015. That was by Rob Mulchen for Swanson Development. They did ask, they pulled it off about a week ago, asked that that be pushed off into at least a July meeting, so we'll see if they want to move forward in July. So just be aware of that. If anybody's in the audience, we wouldn't have had time to get any letters out for that particular application, but I think a lot of folks here are for the one that's still on the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Moving now into our new business for item seven, letter A, rezoning and zoning ordinance amendment request. Remember that all rezoning regulation amendment requests will be considered at the August 15th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting unless deferred or withdrawn by the Planning Commission or the applicant. Item one is Ryan Long for the Hensley Group LLC, REZ 24014. Location is 10400 Manchester Pike. Commissioner District is six for Jonathan Beverley. Size of site is approximately 15 acres, approximately 9.5 acres to be rezoned. Tax map 173, parcel 6.09. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is commercial general. Mr. Damasi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. As you stated, this property is located at 10,400 Manchester Pike. As you also stated, the applicant is proposing to rezone approximately nine and a half acres of the entire tract at the rear of the property from RM to commercial general CG to build a 6,000 square foot structure. From the applicant's materials, this structure will provide storage for fiberglass pool shells and other equipment for the applicant's pool company. They currently have a location downtown on East Vine Street, but has reached capacity for storage, so they'd like to use this location for the storage of those shelves. They said this will not be a customer-facing and will have minimal traffic. And they plan on leaving the tree line on the property that will prevent any building or materials being seen from Manchester Pike. You'll see there is a concept plan that has been included with your agenda packets. Again, this is not a binding plan, but it should give you an idea of the direction they'd like to go should this property be rezoned. This property will continue to have access onto Manchester Pike with one travel lane for traffic entering the property. They're not showing any traffic improvements at this time, and the traffic study has not been submitted to staff at this point, but the applicant is aware that should this application be approved, a site plan would have to be submitted to our office, and we would have the ability to request a traffic study at that time if we felt one was necessary. They also would need to coordinate any improvements with the access to Manchester Pike with the state, with TDOT, as this is a state road. Landscaping, properties zoned, commercial generals are considered median impact and are required to install a type-two buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned properties. Of course, existing plantings can be used for that. However, they would still have to submit an engineered plan showing how the landscaping would be shown on the property, and our performance standards would also apply. I've talked to several people about this particular application over the last several days. Lot of phone calls, several emails. You'll notice on your iPads that there is about, there's a handful of emails that I put on your SharePoint for you to just get an idea of what some of the folks out there, their concerns are in the area. There's also a fifth one that I got that I actually placed, printed and placed on your desks. That came in after everything had already been uploaded and synced to your iPads, so I wanted to make sure that you saw this as well. Most of the calls that I received, I would say pretty much all of them are all in opposition to this request. I will talk briefly about the recommendation that was made, because I did have some conversations with some of the folks I spoke to about this, and I'll say the same thing that I told most of them that I talked to. When we look at this, of course, our recommendation is just that. It is a recommendation, it's not something that you're bound to follow. There are some things that our engineer, Mike Hughes, is going to discuss here briefly that have transpired since we wrote these comments out. But when we looked at this originally, we were looking more at the, what the county's land use plan shows as far as it being within an identified employment area, as well as the fact it's along Manchester Pike. Now, that being said, whenever we adopt a long-range plan like we did back in 2011, that doesn't mean all the properties in that area that's identified as such automatically get rezoned to that. There is a timing element involved to all of this. So part of the discussions today will be to determine whether or not the commission feels it's appropriate to recommend approval of this particular tract at this time. So again, there is a timing element involved with that. So with that, I know Mike does a few things to talk about, so I'm going to turn it over to him, and we bevel for any questions after that.
Okay. Thank you, Douglas. We have been receiving calls on this about mud being tracked into the Manchester Pike, neighbors complaining about water being dammed up on the property, a lot of work happening out on site, and we went out and investigated and found out that they have disturbed a lot of the acreage and have brought a lot of fill into the site, and I'll show you some of the photos.
And while Mike's pulling those up, I'll just mention that we didn't put all the photos on your iPads, but there's a handful on there, but I think Mike's going to go through all of them on the big screen.
So they've, several areas, they've brought in several feet of fill material. This is one showing a lot of fill right up against some trees. I've been told there's a sinkhole behind this. There was an old building they tore down, looked like they tried to burn some of it. So that's a big no-no. Here's some more of the site. You can see several feet of fill material brought onto the property. Lot of grading activity. This is the old barn that's on the property. There is a wide driveway that was installed with this. This is something you note, there's some pipes stored on the property. Kind of can see that there. This is a stop work order that our stormwater inspector issued mainly because they did not have zoning approval, they did not have site plan approval, no erosion control measures We did issue a one-acre land disturbance permit to build a barn dominium on the property, but this work has far exceeded that. This is a little, across the main entrance, this is John's inspection truck at the back of it. He did put some ribbon across it and posted a stop work order, and they essentially drove over it. It's hard to see, but it's, you know, if there's a flagging or a stake out there, you would hope they would respect that. And there's another issue of that, photo of that. More of the same. This is a little area that's kind of on the southern end of the property that's, all the fill material's kind of damming up the water, and you can kind of see how it's mushy right here. Let's see, I think that's the last one. We do have, let's see. There with me a second. So this is the property as it looked, I think it said March 2023 from Google Street View. There's some piles of stuff in here, but that's, you know, nothing like we're seeing right now. If you do look at Google's imagery, they do have one from earlier this year. Let's see. Where you can see a lot of the work that's being done on here. It's far in excess of the one-acre disturbance, so they've gone above and beyond what we've allowed them to do. We allowed them one acre, typically one acre is enough to get an area to build a house and a driveway in. So, but this is far in excess of that, what they're doing. The material, we don't know where the material's coming from. They do have a construction company, so we assume it's spoils material from the construction company. Let me get to another map. Turn off the zoning and zoom in a little bit. So we have received some complaints from the adjacent property owners, and I'll turn on some contour lines, some topographic lines, and let you see what I'm talking about. So the fill material has prevented water that naturally washes through, drains through their property from draining. Computer will work. So I believe we got a call from this neighbor, and I believe this neighbor, it flows in this direction through the property, and this is an area where a lot of the fill's been happening along here. So it's been dammed up, and I think these two neighbors called about that. So we have some concerns about them not following the rules, going through the proper steps and channels. So we did issue a stop work order. We will need them to come in and talk to us about how to rectify this. So this is a pretty big deal that, you know, we need this addressed definitely before anything else happens. But, you know, have any questions for me?
Can you turn the zoning map back on, Mike? Please, sir.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, you said you have put a stop work order?
We've issued a stop work order.
They have not contacted you at all?
They have, I think Friday?
But they haven't been compliant.
What's that?
They haven't been compliant.
They, up till Friday, I think they've stopped bringing material in, but we issued it Wednesday, they kept bringing material in, and then I think my assistant talked to the applicant on Friday, and he told us that they'd stopped. So.
Can you zoom out a little bit, Mike? I'm just trying to get a idea.
The highlighted property is where the application is for. This is, let's see, there's 24 Manchester Pike, Ridley Earp to the south, Big Springs over here. This is the Epsomille interchange with a lot of the EAC around it. Most of this is all residential medium density, and a little bit farther to the southeast is residential low density.
What's the little industrial spot there?
That's institutional, actually, IN. That's the county convenience center, and I think an ambulance station right there. That's about a half mile down the road from the subject property, not quite. Going in the other direction, the closest commercial, these own property, outside of Epsomille Road, it's about two, two and a half miles, commercial he's owned on the right-hand side. To Epsomille Road, going down Epsomille, you're probably looking about a mile and a half, roughly. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Seth?
No.
Okay. Questions, comments from commissioners? Seth?
Mr. Chair, how wide is that driveway? They obviously must not have a permit to widen that as much as they did. It was more like a subdivision entrance.
Well, no, they don't have a permit for anything except a one-acre disturbance for barn dominium is what they told us, so.
Okay, that roadway or driveway looked pretty significant.
It looked pretty significant.
A little like a commercial driveway.
Yes.
Pre-commercial.
So that's one of the things we'd address when we do see a site plan is the driveway width. We'll have to get, Manchester Pike is a TDOT road, so we'll have to get TDOT approval. But let's see, if there's anything else. I believe I've covered it all, but it's a lot of happenings without permits and approvals.
And I know we've had discussions in previous rezonings and developments, this corridor, the US 231 corridor and other US route corridors to try to preserve character of those areas.
Correct, which, and I will say, I think that was part of the reason why they only rezoned the back portion as opposed to the front, because of some of those concerns. We relayed those concerns to them during the pre-application meeting. Of course, what they want to do is primarily in the back anyway, but yeah, most of that up front would be left alone, except for that little strip to get back there. But yes, we've had that conversation several times on different rezonings up and down the corridor, especially on this one.
It just looked pretty significant from roadway edge to back.
And the comparison of the truck, too, that was parked there. Yeah, it's pretty, pretty wide.
Masters? If no one else, I'll ask that the applicants come forward this time. Come right up here, your name and address.
My name's Ryan Long. My address is 1818 Scoville, Nashville, 37208.
Tell us a little about your plan and...
Yes, so I guess just to address some of the comments.
Can you speak up a little?
Yeah, sure.
Might have to pull it up a little bit, because you're tall.
Is that better? Yeah, I guess just to address some of the comments so far, we were under the impression that we were operating correctly underneath the permit that we did have in place. So my understanding was there was confusion on the permit itself that did mention under an acre, but there was another part of the permit that said, or 5% of the total area. It was since figured out that that was just in relationship of the structure itself, not the amount of dirt, I guess, that could be disturbed. And so I think that's where the confusion from our side came from, is we thought we were operating under the purview of what we had in place. If we would have known, we never would have done any of this if we had known that it was not operating correctly. But I guess just to speak to the plans, I mean, you did a pretty good job of describing what we're looking to do. We do have an office building downtown that holds most of our office employees. There is some places for storage, and we have some garage bays, but we've kind of expanded outside of that. We're kind of busting at the seams. And so our goal for this is to create a structure that we can store fiberglass pool shells as well as some trucks and equipments inside of like garage bays. We don't anticipate doing any like mass open storage. Everything would be inside the purview of the structure itself. As you mentioned, we don't anticipate this being client-facing, who'd just really be our employees and deliveries, and those would be pretty minimal. I'm open to answering any additional questions, I guess, that the commission has. This is the first one I've ever been to, so I'm not really sure what the process is.
Masters? Questions for the applicant?
You said the Hensley Group is out of Nashville, and how long have you worked in Rutherford County?
So I personally live in Nashville. 95% of our company lives in Murfreesboro, so it's a local Murfreesboro company. I think he's lived here for maybe 10 years, something like that. He went to Vanderbilt and moved here after that.
You said, your office is downtown. Where is that located?
408 East Vine Street. It's like a little bit south of the square.
Commissioner Aberwater?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have questions about the type of trucks and the number of trucks that you expect per day? How many employees you expect to be working out of this building? How tall is this building going to be? What's it going to be made out of? Can you give us some more information about what's going, a day there is going to look like?
Sure, yeah. We don't expect daily deliveries by any means. This is mainly for us to take orders of pool shells in advance, because right now, when we have a customer that orders a pool, we get our pool shells from a company in Australia. It takes anywhere from 12 to 16 weeks from order to getting them to ship it. So our thought process is we can pre-buy these in bulk, we'll save a little money, we can store them on site, and then when they're purchased, we can then take them and then deliver them to the home address of the customer. The pool shells are pretty big, so it's like, I guess technically an oversized load, if you've ever seen them like traveling down the highway. And so that was kind of the main reason for the driveway itself, is to be able to accommodate vehicles like that. But outside of those vehicles, I mean, it would basically just be like, I guess, personal trucks. And then we don't anticipate anybody working there full-time. Again, we have an office downtown that houses our like office employees. We're open to suggestions, though, so it's kind of early in the process, so I mean, we're kind of fluid on what y'all would allow, but I think those are our initial thoughts of what we would like to do.
So you bring these pools in, one pool per truck? Is that how that works? Do they get multiple pools on a truck?
Yes, so they can stack inside. I don't really know the maximum amount. Like, I personally have seen like five or six stacked at once. So yes, it would be, it wouldn't be like multiple trucks having to come in with just one shell. One truck could accommodate multiple shells.
So would you need some sort of hoist or crane equipment to load and unload these?
It depends on the access. So like, for instance, when they are installed in a, in clients' home, there are times where you have a crane that like cranes it over top of the house and drops it in. I don't know personally if that would be required for the offload here, because they're traveling such a short distance, there's not a home that you have to like get it into the backyard, but I can definitely find out and let you know, but I don't believe so.
I'm just wondering how you get those inside of the building and get them unloaded inside the building if you're going to store them inside?
Yeah, so if you have our plans, I think in front of us, you'll see that there is a garage bay that is very tall, so my understanding is a flatbed truck can back into that, and then you have some type of like hoist system that, like a wrench or something that goes over and can wrench them up and then drop them, put them down.
And I heard barn dominium mentioned. Will someone be living here?
So the only reason why we chose those plans, because they were stock plans, and we didn't have to have them like custom developed, and so we were able to save a substantial amount of money going that route. And so technically, the plans are for a residential home, but no, no one would be living there full-time. And again, we're open to changing the plans if we need to. But you can see the bays, and I don't know if there's a picture of the elevation, but it shows, it's not like a typical like driveway and garage door.
If not, I have a question. Even if you didn't understand that maybe the permit didn't include where you were placing fill and this sort of thing, did you not take in consideration that this was fairly wet property there and that you were possibly backing up water upon the neighbors?
So I personally didn't, so I handle our permits, so I can talk to our project manager about it. My understanding, though, is they didn't have an issue with it. We were just notified very recently that there was an issue of pooling water, and I spoke with some of the neighbors on Friday about that. And so we would have addressed all this sooner had we known that we were causing any issues. Again, I want to reiterate, it wasn't like we were purposely acting in a manner that was outside of what we thought we were legally allowed to do. And so we're absolutely open to working with neighbors and engineering to accommodate the flow and make it work. I think you did mention that there's a stop work order on Wednesday. The first I heard about it was Friday, and so I contacted the office immediately, and no work has been done since that point.
Who drove across the line?
So we do have truck drivers and dump truck drivers that are putting fill in, so I assume it was one of the workers.
You are the owner?
No, I'm just an employee for the company.
Okay. I thought you were the owner.
I'm not the owner.
Okay. The buck stops with the owner. They've got to know the details of what's going on, they've got to understand what they're impacting, and they need to get their details straight.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
Masters, other questions? Comments? If not, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now go into our public comment period. I'll open that up at this time. Let me make some explanations and some ground rules, I guess. You'll see that there is a timer here on the desk. When you come forward, you'll have three minutes to make your comments, either for or against. There will be not, there will not be a question and answer period. You just make your comments of what you feel and what you have your comments about, like I said, either for or against. You'll see that there is a green and yellow and red light, same thing you do out here on the highway. When you see yellow, that means slow down. When you see red, that means stop, and we'd appreciate that you do that. Also, that there are several of you here this evening, if some of you have the same opinion, if you could work together where one individual can bring your opinion before us, that would really help with the time, because you're saying the same thing. And if you have that same opinion, we'll just ask the question, if you agree with this individual, let you raise your hand. That gives us some idea of how many are for what that individual may be saying. But we had asked that if that's a possibility, we ask that you do that. But we'll begin, we'll let you come one at a time. When you see somebody finishing, you can be starting to come forward. So we'll begin, and we'll let the first one who wishes to come forward and speak, come forward this time. We'd like for you to give your name and your address, so we can have that for the record.
My name's Robert Benton. I live at 10220 Manchester Highway, Christiana, just one parcel away from the subject parcel and directly bordering another property, piece of that property that Mr. Hensley owns that's adjoining the subject property. So this matter has a significant impact on my property. I'm here to register in opposition to this zoning from residential to commercial. Not only do I oppose having a commercial property spoiling what is a beautiful, quiet, rural residential area, I have serious concerns about the intentions and the integrity of the owner of the subject property. the owner of the subject property. I was originally told by Mr. Hensley over a year ago, I believe almost two years ago, that it was to store empty pool shells, as you heard. Then, I heard that it was to be a residential property and build a home. I believe the residential idea, which now I understand is a barn dominium, was really an intentional falsification of what his real intentions were on this property. There is an abundance of commercial property already existing in the area and nearby. So, why not purchase existing commercially zoned property, except to intentionally purchase less expensive land knowingly not zoned commercial and then dishonestly occupy it commercially? This is proven out by his extensive actions to modify the property by unlawfully grading the property without proper permits, without engineering studies, and without county oversight. I believe this grading has impacted water runoff negatively on many people, including my own property, because it has flowed onto my neighbors and then onto my property. Additionally, in the fall of 2023, during a period in which no burning was permitted in the county, the owner proceeded to illegally burn enormous piles of cleared trees and debris and do so when high winds were forecasted and were actually being experienced. I personally observed the flames reaching as high as existing treetops, and I experienced large amounts of ash falling on my property, causing me tremendous anxiety and alarm. And I later learned that ash was also falling as far away as Horseshoe Downs, a substantial distance from the subject property. I then proceeded to contact the fire department and the sheriff's department to ask if a burn permit had been issued, upon which I was told no, and there were no open fires allowed. As a result, the fire department came on scene to extinguish this raging blaze. Although he may claim ignorance of both of these abuses, as a longtime...
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Those of you that agree with the individual and what he said there may raise your hands if you'd rather that to be your opinion. That's fine. Anyone else wishes to come forward and speak? I believe, if you raise them, just again, so the commissioners can all see. You got those? Okay. Anyone else like to come forward? Okay. Anyone else wishes to come forward and speak? Just that mic, will that work for you?
Hello, everyone. My name is Mary Hatchell. I live at 8191 Big Springs Road, Christiana. I'm on the corner across from the area that's being damaged. The noise level that I have a problem with, my mother's elderly mother that I live at home with, and sometimes when those backhoes would come on the property across the street, they will dig concrete and dirt to six or seven o'clock in the morning, knowing they've been there all night long. This happens on weekends as well as through weekdays. My mother has lupus, and she needs her sleep, but it's hard for her to get sleep. And the noise reduction has really been there since they moved in the backhoes, and they've moved in the rock trucks. The noise level is supreme. I mean, you can't even get sleep at night. But to go on, there is an ordinance at 10:00 PM at night, the noise level is supposed to stop. This goes on to six or seven o'clock in the morning. Now, how are we, as residents, be able to sleep at night and in the morning? It's not satisfactory, and that's all I have to say.
I believe I already see a hand raising right back there. We've got more hands, if you want to count those. Okay. Anyone else wishes to speak with a different topic?
Hello, I'm John Fordham, 10554 Manchester Pike. I'm immediately adjacent, actually, we're that kind of trapezoidal, that property right there. So, Mr. Hughes pointed out the issues with the, with the stormwater drainage. I'm not gonna go over that again. The biggest point I want to make, so I'm gonna hit it first, is that this, this appears to me to be a case of spot zoning, which I understand is technically illegal in Tennessee. They're seeking a zoning change that benefits only the applicant. There's no benefit to the surrounding community. There's, it's not bringing any jobs, it's not any socio-economic impact, there's no ball fields being created, and there's nothing that benefits the immediate community around this property. If anything, there's only detriments. There's, again, issues with stormwater runoff, there's issues, there's gonna be traffic issues. You're gonna have large tractor trailers pulling into this site. It's a very narrow, the road is very narrow there, there's no shoulder. These tractor trailers are gonna have to swing wide to turn into a parking lot or into the driveway. There's a slight rise just south of this driveway on Manchester Pike. I am at the top of the rise, my driveway. I have a hard time seeing traffic coming north on Manchester Pike. And people regularly drive, you all know, I'm sure, they drive, it's fifty, but they drive sixty, sometimes seventy miles an hour coming up the road, right? So, that's gonna be a traffic hazard. The other thing is the disingenuous nature of how this application has gone down. You guys have already talked about how the applicant has violated his permit, he's doing open burning during the burn ban, which the fire department had to come and put out. What's to say that once he has his commercial zoning, okay, that he doesn't look at it as having the keys to the kingdom? Okay? The list of activities there, from what I read on the zoning website, the list of activities that are possible under a CG zone are retail, consumer and personal services, auto repair, entertainment and amusement, food services. It's just a whole big list. So, what's to say that once he has his zoning, that he doesn't change what he's doing there? So, we're all very concerned about this, but the biggest concern, I think, is that there's, there's really no benefit to the immediate residents of the area. There's no income, it's, it's not doing anything for anybody but the applicant. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I believe we've got more hands. Pretty much everyone. Okay, thank you. Do we have another statement that's maybe different from what we've heard? One right here. We'll get you, and I believe we'll get you next over here. Yes, sir.
Eugene R. Hubbs. I reside at 10359 Christiana. They're talking about drains, waters going to their house. I'm gonna cross the street, I'm the closest run, right there where they made the roads and where the state highway had built, underneath, a drain pipe. I'm the only one on the road that has this big drain pipe. So, I talked to the owner across the street that owned that, before he sold it to these people. And he said, well, I had a business across the street where you're at, he's out of wood business and everything, and some metal. I said, yeah, okay. I said, well...
Sir, talk to the commissioner.
Oh, okay. I said, well, where, where does the drain come from? He said, well, all the water was in front of my property across the street. So, what I did is not what you know, who you know, and I had it put in. Now, you, that whole big pipe goes into mine and floods my property. I can prove it. The state come down, took pictures of it, and he looks at it, and he goes, yeah, that is, hmm. I said, yeah, what can we do about that? Look at the driveway. I said, keep plowing it with my backhoe, to keep it so I can at least get in and out. And he goes, yeah, and he wipes his mouth, and he says, you're gonna have to live with it. No. Now, I went across the street, the man come over, he said, well, I can take care of that. We can put a catch basin in. If we have to, we'll do it to help you. And he said, the water that's coming from our property, we're straining down, it's going into that pipe, into your property. He said, we can't block it off, 'cause the state would have something to say about it. So, we'll put a catch bucket in, catch basin, and we'll work it out. Nice guy, nice guy across the street. He, I, he made that road wide for them trucks, and he'd come in with a heavy stone, 'cause the more he'd come in, the more it would sink. Anybody knows it done construction, you gotta keep building the road up. I don't care what you do. Now, in the back, the man could have buried that stuff, and you said, we didn't even know nothing about it. But he was being honest. And I talked to him, he said, well, yeah, he says, whatever I can do to make everybody happy, I'll do it. So, I don't even know why we're here. The neighbors say, well, the water's running over. Neighbors, come to my house. Come, I'll show you what they did to my field. Just pull out on the road. You see the mud, you said, coming down the road? Did they or did they not come down with a road sweeper and clean that road? Did they or did they not? There's none of them here to say they can't. They did. They've been keeping it clean, sweeping it up. Then he said, soon as it dries up good, we'll come over and we'll take care of your place. There was nothing wrong. So, I don't know where, and the building is gonna be like the building across the street where it keeps its trucks inside, and he does concrete driveways, but not, you don't, you don't see his place, nothing's beautiful. He redid the place, it was a trash when he moved into it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I believe we have right over here?
Hello. My name is Robert Morgan, and the property with the little brown blotch of trees right there is my property, 7467, really are. When I first bought that property and they started clearing that property off, I walked over and asked one of the bulldozer operators. And he said, I said, what are y'all doing? And he says, well, my boss wants to build a shop to work on his heavy equipment. And I said, okay. And I said, but how can he do that with it being residential? And the next word out of his mouth was, well, I just do what my boss tells me to do. So, anyway, for the last six months, we've been hearing clacking of dump truck tailgates and all of this dirt coming in. Well, my neighbor at 7411 and my house at 7467, we're all on a whale, because cud won't come down through that side of the interstate, because it's not profitable for. So, we're wondering where all this dirt comes from and it's seeping into the soil. So, we're drinking that. So, that's a major concern of ours. And as far as, the pool's gonna be delivered by tractor and trailer trucks. So, that's why he has a road in there that's almost as wide as, or wider than Manchester Highway. So, and the door on his shop that he's proposing, do you think you can get a twenty-by-forty-foot pool in there? I don't think so. The tractor and trailer trucks is not big enough to get in there. But we're against the rezoning because of the traffic, the noise. He also has a large fuel, diesel truck storage, you know, fuel on there, which, you know, are they spilling fuel and it's seeping into the ground? But that's what I, you know, that's why I'm against it. And I appreciate y'all letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Count some more hands. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Yeah, Ricky Marlin, 7868 Blankenship Road, Christiana. I'm on the other side of the road, but I'm about a half a mile by the crow flies. So, I'm against this rezoning and hope that y'all be helpful in getting this denied. It's a spot zoning, it's, we don't want commercial out there, it's surrounded by residential. We live in peace and harmony out there until, you know, this, this came up. And the, the plan, the, me and Doug talked about the recommendation, which, the 2035, it's 2024. So, none of that other property around there is ever gonna be commercial. We, the Bins and Ingleson property that we kept it from being residential, excuse me, commercial and industrial, we thank, thank the good Lord above that those wise decisions were made about twelve years ago to deny that property from being rezoned. So, we thank you for this committee for doing that, and we hope you'll follow up with this, with this vote as well, too, if it gets a vote. I couldn't say it any better than Mr. Benton said. I believe this has been a farce from the get-go. I believe they intentionally set that driveway, they knew their plans all along. They've repeatedly disrespected the county, the citizens, the neighbors. I don't know if they're here now, have they got up and spoke? If I was a, I would want to be a good neighbor. I'd be coming up trying to speak for this if I was wanting this. But I haven't heard them speak. I don't know if they're here. Mr. Long, you may know if they're here or not. You're gonna take the brunt of it, but we're against this. We respectfully ask that you deny this spot zoning. It's not the time. Doug said the key word there is the time. It's not the time for this to be rezoned. They can't even follow the rules that we got right now. And, and that's a big concern to us. So, everybody raise their hands that's against this, so everybody can look here. Everybody's, everybody's against it, right? And we, we respectfully ask that y'all deny this request and, and make this, kick this down the road. If it's ten, twenty years it gets rezoned, we're dead and gone, maybe, or something like that. But not right now. Now's not the timing, please, okay? So, we appreciate y'all's time. Thank you, Doug, for serving the county. Doug, Doug does good. Me, I call him about every month, probably. He gets tired of hearing from me. But thank y'all. Please deny this, and we would appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there anyone has something different? I think we've covered. If not, anyone else? Last call. If not, we'll close the public comment period. Commissioner Abba Water?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's really important to remember that we're here to, we're here to consider a zoning request and, and despite any sins of the past or misunderstandings, ignorance of regulations or whatever, it's, it's only for a zoning request. And looking at a commercial general, which is a pretty broad range of zonings, a pretty broad range of uses, and the prevalence of, of medium-density and low-density residential in the area, combined with, I think, our desire to keep Manchester Pike more scenic and rural, until such points as the city expands and some of that activity up closer to the interstate interchange, I feel like that, that having this particular zoning classification, this, this far from everything is, is just a bit premature. Therefore, I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
Have a motion to deny. Second. Have a second for the discussion.
Want to ask a question? If this is denied, what happens? Everything that's been done out there, what happens next?
Okay, well, as, now, let me break this into a couple of different things. As far as the zoning application itself, okay, this application, if they would like to move forward to the August fifteen meeting with the recommendation for tonight, that's certainly their prerogative. I imagine we'll have some conversations with the applicant over the next several days as to whether or not they wish to do that. Most applicants do not, but they have the right to do that. Now, I think your question really was more about the activity that's gone on, on the property. Regardless of what happened tonight, regardless of it were going to be approved or what were going to be denied, they're going to have to meet with us and talk with staff, especially our engineering staff, about what they're gonna do to rectify the issues that they created with all the fill material they brought onto the property. So, I would imagine, and Mike correct me if I'm wrong, but I imagine that they're gonna have to have a sit-down with us. We're gonna want to see some kind of a drainage plan to show how they're going to fix the issues that were caused with the fill that was brought in. At that point, we would at least lift the stop work order to allow them to do the work that is shown on that plan, not anything else, but with that. And we would just monitor that moving forward. And Mike, please, feel free to chime in. And Mike, please feel free to chime in.
I just wanted to make sure that all of the people that have shown up tonight in opposition to it are concerned about what's happened out there. So I wanted to save you a lot of telephone calls by you being able to explain what's going to happen to rectify that piece of property that's already been worked on, that wasn't supposed to have been. So crystal clear that there's going to have to be some rectification of that piece of property to, to reverse some of the damage that's already been done, water damage most specifically. So it won't be left as is.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Jim Everwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Lee Vogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P.?
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
David Jones?
Chip Pinion?
Yes.
Cettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Has been denied. Moving into item two, subdivision regulations and amendments, ORD 24002, revisions to Article 3H, stormwater design, amendments for consistency with the updated county stormwater ordinance, planning and engineering staffs are the applicants. Mr. Damasi?
Yes, sir, thank you. Last month, you'll recall that we made some changes to the zoning ordinance in regards to the new county stormwater ordinance that was adopted, well, at the time, last month was going to be adopted by the Stormwater Advisory Committee. That has since happened on May 21st. These amendments that we are proposing for the subdivision regulations does follow along with that. These follow a little bit different process than what the zoning ordinance does. We are required to have a public hearing on these amendments here, but these do not go any further. These stay at the planning commission since they deal with the subdivision regulations. You'll see a copy of those amendments in your packets. They have to be adopted by September 1st, which obviously we have plenty of time being here tonight. These really are just dealing with the changes that need to be made on, with that new ordinance to comply with the new state rule in stormwater phase two NPDES permit. We do have our county engineer, Mike Hughes, as well as our assistant county engineer, Sheila Huffmeyer, in the audience, that would be more than happy to answer any questions. I can tell you water flows downhill, and that's about as far as I go. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for the staff?
Essentially, we're taking out where you have to use the Nashville-Davidson County Metro Stormwater Management Manual and Regulations and updating it to state, stormwater BMP manuals and regulations outlined in the Rutherford County Stormwater Ordinance, so they match. So that's, that's essentially the biggest change, isn't it?
Okay. Don't have any questions, and we can't call the applicants because they're already sitting up here. We'll just go ahead into our public comment, our public hearing period right now. I'll call the public comment period open. Anyone would like to come forward and make comment as far as these amendments and subdivision regulations to come forward at this time? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public comment period. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a, I'll make a motion that we accept these changes and subject all comments that have been related to this change.
Have the motion.
Second.
Have second. Commissioner Everwater, further discussion? Follow the roll.
Jim Everwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Lee Vogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
David Jones?
Yes.
Chip Pinion?
Yes.
Cettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the motion has carried. Just a reminder, all rezoning regulation amendments request will be considered at the August 15, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting unless referred or withdrawn by the planning commissioner applicant. Item eight, staff reports and other business.
Nothing really beyond, just, and you're probably going to say this anyway, Mr. Chairman, but I'll just steal your thunder here. Our next planning commission meeting being on Tuesday, the 25th of June. That's different from the Monday meeting that we typically had. It's because the county commission will have their budget meeting in here that Monday morning. Also, following that meeting, we'll have our work session on flag lots, easements and whatnot in room 205. So just want to make sure you're aware of that. 205, yeah, right next door. Kind of like we did a few months ago with the plan developed, we'll just adjourn this meeting, go next door. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything else should come before this group?
Mr. Chairman, I really like the hand raising technique. I think it saves some time. So maybe the chairman can recognize that also. The hand raising technique, I think, saved us a lot of time. I appreciate that.
Seemed to work tonight, and we had a lot of people that seemed to do that. The problem is, we've got to have a fast counter up here that's taking care of that for us. Anything else? If not, we adjourn.